Let me call to order the city council meeting of September 13th. Please rise for invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, when we look at the calendar this week and are reminded of the events of seventeen years ago, it reminds us of all the things that we need to be thankful for and of tough times that we've come through together. And here in Williamsport, we also have to remember to be thankful. Thankful for our neighbors who so enrich our lives. Be thankful for the features of our community and the opportunities that we enjoy on a day-to-day basis that enhance our quality of life. And then we have to be, remember to be thankful for all the public safety professionals in our city, in our Commonwealth, in our nation, and that serve around the world to keep us safe and protect our way of life. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is approval of city council meeting minutes dated August 30th, 2018. Motion and second to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Here, motion and second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, Ms. Frank.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Nobile.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those minutes are approved. I should comment that Councilwoman Katz will not be with us this evening, but I'm happy to report that she is doing much better than she was two weeks ago, and we wish her a speedy recovery and return back to City Hall. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by, for heirs, as chairman of the Government Study Commission of their final report. Miss Harris, welcome this evening.
Welcome, and thank you for allowing me to discuss the process that the Government Study Commission went through and what we have done in proposing a change in the government structure of the city to be placed on the ballot in November. The following question is going to be placed on the November 6th ballot. Shall the home rule charter contained in the report dated September 4th, 2018 of the Government Study Commission, prepared in accordance with the home rule charter and optional plan law, be adopted by the city of Williamsport? As most people in this room know, last November, there were two ballot questions and two commissions appointed and tasked with a study of the current city structure and whether there should be a change proposed in the current city structure. The Government Study Commission of what, the commission that I was part of, had a much broader scope of review than the Charter Commission. We worked with them in sharing survey results because we didn't want to duplicate the real one that results could be beneficial to both commissions. We examined other communities through the Commonwealth that have adopted home rule, and rather than just saying, yes, we think home rule would be great for Williamsport, we were also tasked with drafting a proposed charter. Our draft, which is, there are copies sitting in the city clerk's office, is nineteen, 29 pages of statutory language which sets out a structure and a framework for the operation of government in the city. One of the things that we felt important to the citizens of this community was the ability to still elect their own mayor. We felt that to create better efficiencies within communication between the departments within the government of the city, that a city manager should also be appointed to work in conjunction with the mayor to act as a liaison between council and the city manager. We believe that the mayor should be tasked with the responsibility of bringing economic development into the city. One of the things that we were allowed to do that was not permitted under the optional charter law was get rid of the mandate from the Commonwealth that there be a comptroller and treasurer position in the city. Those positions, while important, and it may be that we decide that the city needs those positions, we aren't mandated to have them under Commonwealth law. So the charter basically grants the city wide authority to do anything that is not prohibited under the laws of the Commonwealth so that it can best meet the needs of this unique community and its citizens here. The manner in which it can be amended, changed, is also a less onerous manner if we find that this is not our proposed charter, is not something that is working. Further down the road, it can be amended, and we would not have to go through the same process as a, as going through a Charter Commission procedure as we went through last One of the things that we hoped that our proposed draft would cover and help change is the efficiency of the government. There didn't seem, when we looked at the existing structure of government, to be an accurate flow chart for the, for the departments, what powers were delineated to which department, who had the authority to do what, and so that we wanted to set that out in a charter to make those roles and lines clear. We also, in our charter, provided for the city council to make changes to the tax structure if necessary due to financial concerns of the city. We have required in the charter that city government be more transparent to the local communities by using the most current social media communication forms so that seeing your government charter, seeing your ordinances would be easy and clear to find on a website. We set in place procedures for vacancies, procedures for bidding contracts, procedures for creating a balanced budget, fiscal matters. We created a framework. We believe we created a good framework for the city to change its structure, which would allow the city to grow, which could grow with the city, and could change as the needs of the city changed. I would encourage everyone to look at the charter. I know some of the charter members, I'm an attorney, some of them glazed over when I made them sit through hours of writing statutory language. But I believe that we came up with a good draft charter to form a basins of a clear structure for the city of Williamsport, and would encourage everyone to take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report, and as we did when Mr. Holland came and gave the report from the other committee, I want to just basically limit council's response to thanking you and your commission members for all the hard work they did, putting in research time and effort to think through what might be in the best interest of the city, and in particular, both groups working very hard to help educate the public on what are very complex choices that the public will need to be making in the coming election so that those choices can be thoughtful, reasoned, and forward-looking. So, thank you again on behalf of council. With that said, are there other comments from members of council? Ms. Allison.
Pretty much echoing exactly what Dr. Williamson said, but I just want to address the notion that some have out there, that council has somehow pushed all of this, that we have an agenda that we want to see accomplished. I want to disabuse that notion because the very nature of the process of the two commissions did not include, we neither helped nor hindered either commission beyond any information they wouldn't have requested from us to come to any conclusion. It was, this is totally a democratic process. It's allowed by the state, it's encouraged by the state, that communities, at least periodically, and this is a once-in-a-generational occurrence for Williamsport, that we look at these things. It's a good thing to take stock, whether you're an individual, a business, or a government, of who you are, what you're doing, where you've been, where you're going, where you want to go, and what is the best way to get there. And I see the work of your commission fitting in exactly with that, and I too, and we all thank you for the endless hours that you put in. Not to achieve your agenda, but to give the citizens of Williamsport an opportunity to make a choice. And once in a generation, I don't think that's a rare thing that we should encounter.
If I may remark on your comments, when I was asked to join the Government Study Commission, I knew that it was a citizen-proposed agenda. I wasn't entirely sure what the other commission was, so I wasn't part of that, but I just thought if we were going to look at a change in the government structure for the city, then I felt that it was a good idea not to limit ourselves to one option, to explore both options that were available, whether to stay under optional charter or to draft a home rule. And based on the research that we did, you know, we thought it was, under our purview to recommend, that we thought that a home rule charter could be beneficial to the city, and set about drafting what we thought would be beneficial for the city. So, thank you.
And the only thing I'll close with then is to encourage the public to read both of these, to ask questions, to have conversations with their neighbors, and to think through, really now, three options. I know it's two separate votes, but ultimately, there are three possible outcomes. One is remaining with our current system. Another is to go with the recommendation of the Government Study Commission for a home rule charter and all the things described here. And the third is the chart, the recommendation of the Charter Commission under the optional third-class city code and the city manager form of government. Until you've, until, I don't even know that I have dug as far as I want to dig into it to be fully comfortable with how I will cast my vote. And so I encourage everyone to join with me to dig further and research more and ask more questions so that we're all fully informed. I think that's all, all of our responsibilities, and I believe I heard from Mr. Holland, and I'm assuming I will hear from you, that even though essentially both commissions are now disbanded?
No, actually, the Government Study Commission does not disband until after the election, and as part of the dictates of the Government Study Commission, there is a transition, if this is voted in, if the charter is voted in, there is a transition plan, and there are members of the transition team that come from the Government Study Commission. So, we are in until after the election and perhaps, depending on the vote, into a transition period.
And so, the point that I was going to make is, both, Mr. Holland, even though they are disbanded, having completed their work, and I'm assuming you would agree that you and your commissions are available for anyone in the public who might have questions and want to understand either group's thought processes more completely. And I think we should all take advantage of that. So, again, thank you for your service. And so we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is a presentation related to our, the city's insurance, by Jill Nagy, our insurance consultant. Ms. Nagy, how are you this evening?
Good, how are you? Thanks for having me this evening.
Absolutely, thanks for being here, and I don't know if you want to start with a presentation, probably having heard some of the concerns council had, and then we can move into questions and exchange after you're ready.
Certainly. As council knows, the RFP for insurance brokers is now currently on the street. It has been circulated to all of the potential proposers that have expressed an interest in all those, both local and who have expressed interest in the past. That's been widely disseminated. We made sure all the potential folks that attended the meeting earlier this spring received a copy of the proposal. They were expressed interest enough to come here to talk about it earlier this year, to understand the timeframes and what the city was looking at. As of last week, we invited those folks to ask any questions they might have of the proposals. Janice was kind enough to make sure that those were all compiled, and then we got answers to everyone as of last Friday. So the process that has recommenced is on track to receive proposals from any interested party on the 21st of September. So, basically, we're a slip of one week from where we thought we might want it to have been in May, but with that and getting the proposals into the city, this is going to be an analysis, it's going to be looking a lot at cost, but also looking at service. It's a dual RFP so that we'll be looking at multiple factors when we consider what the broker does for the city, and it might be multiple brokers. The RFP is set up such that the city can evaluate the best fit for the needs of the city. And like I said, we have asked for both local and large-scale proposals to see what type of services and prices are out there as far as that is concerned. So, at this point, council really is in a position to have this in, whatever you choose to do, the evaluations, to have either maintain the status quo or award the brokers this year, there is plenty of time. Like I said, the schedule's only slipped a week, which is good. I do encourage council to figure out in conjunction with staff, even as much as tonight, what you would like to do as far as any valuation committee. In order to have success in this program for the 2019 policy year, there's going to be a lot of work from staff and me. It's going to be front-loaded, no matter what, because we're looking very heavily at the inventories we have at the city, we're looking at some other strategies, so no matter what you do moving forward, we're going to have a very, very busy November because we want to make sure everything is comprehensive. We've identified some needs and some things that I would like the existing and/or future brokers to be looking at, and that's all going to have to be pulled together pretty quickly in November. So, if council can award this in October, that would be fantastic, so we can be hitting the ground running for a December award.
And, Ms. Nagy, so the public knows you, and I spoke earlier about that specific process this week, and I've had an opportunity to have brief conversations with a couple people, and I think the process that we'll use for a selection committee will be to have that go through the finance committee, and whether you need special meetings or it can be on their normal schedule, I'll let you work out with the chair, who of course you know is Liz Mealy. And Mayor, I would invite you to send, I think the people that make the most sense are the ones that have worked on this over the time, Megan and Joe and Bill, to be a part of that process, because I think it does need to be a collaboration.
More to the city council.
Great, thank you.
And I will, I will supply to the finance committee, like, and to the staff that's going to be assisting, so that everybody can see kind of a list of the certain things we'll be looking at, so that we can be scoring this on a variety of different factors. So I'll see that everybody has that, probably next week. I want, I want everyone to be looking at that before we get the proposals in, in case there's any questions or things that the committee feels that they want to look at as well, so there's input there. But then I want to have that in place so that, you know, everybody can be scored and looked at based upon the same type of criteria. Again, it might be potentially multiple brokers, because we do have that opportunity to have a, it's a flex RFP, and then we can decide if we want to speak with anyone or have any type of interviews, whatever the case might be with that, so we can have that rolling through the end of September and into October.
I'm sure there will be questions more about the process going forward. I just wanted to clear up one thing. You said, "We only really lost a week of slippage." The other question really is, is there anything in the preceding months that have occurred and how the process unfolded that would threaten the successful completion of the process in other ways? Other than timing?
As of now, the process has been cleanly, has been restarted. We've gathered the information that was necessary, we've made sure, we've went back, revisited it to make sure everything has been, is transparent. So basically, with the restart and the transparency that we have at this moment in time, and the information that we've gathered, and the information that we've supplied to the brokers, at this point, it's a clean process.
Okay.
So we have obtained all the questions, you know, I want to make sure that there was no thought or concern that it wasn't clean before, but now it's certainly absolutely a 100% clean process, it's above reproach. Everybody has obtained the same information, all the brokers. People have asked questions today, and we've said, "Hey, we can't answer anymore because the cutoff has occurred, so we don't want any appearance that anybody obtained information that somebody else didn't get." So everybody is on a level playing field as far as the process. As it started two weeks ago, it's considered a 100% clean process, brand new.
Thank you very much for that. Ms. Mayor.
Also, we should say in the finance committee meeting, we said that, in regards to this, we'd like to invite you to the next meeting, because we're constantly looking at trying to reduce costs and gain revenue in the city. So what my recommendation is, is when Jill comes back to the next meeting, it is my recommendation to put out RFPs for all professional services, which would include construction management, HVAC, engineering, architecture, insurances, and legal services. So I believe that we need to take a look at everything, put everything on board, and I know that there's some businesses that have been working with the city in regards to certain construction projects, but once they're completed, I think it's time to put them out for other things as well. So I would, I would welcome that.
I think that's a good conversation to have when we have, soon, when we have the opportunity to kind of expand the range of topics that we're talking about to be able to be comprehensive.
I was also thinking, since we have a budget coming. We need to take a look at some of these things because maybe we can lower some costs in 2019 and 20, but we want to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To return then to insurance specifically, let me open it up for comments or questions from members of council. Ms. Mealy.
I just wanted to state, I guess, so that it's on the record, that while city council wasn't perhaps, while we've been advocating for an RFP process related to our insurance for a couple of years, we weren't specifically driving this process earlier on in the year, but the finance committee has been involved in it pretty much since its inception here at the beginning of 2018. I know that I've attended several meetings as the chair, I know that finance hosted the initial meeting with brokers to sort of contemplate the building of the RFP. So I guess what I would say is that the public can feel confident that between the insurance consultant and the finance committee and the members of the administration, we will not just complete an open and transparent selection process, but a high-quality selection process that looks at the particular issues facing the city with insurance and the qualifications of the brokers.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? One question I had is, there were some issues that were brought up last time that was suggesting essentially that there were some issues that you as, as council on some of these issues, and then of course the consultant more broadly, that faced us insurance-wise that we might need to deal with as, essentially matters of litigation in an executive session. Do you think that would be useful to, for this evening?
Yeah, yes, I would like to talk to council in executive session, and I do want to let council know also that we've been talking with staff, because one of the main things that we've been dealing with for the last years is processes in the city. So now that we will be able to look at a successful proposal, now that we have this process in place and ready to go, there's going to be a rollout. I've been working with the finance committee and with HR to come up with communication strategy and to better frame out the risk management strategies of the city, so now we're in a much more comfortable place after the information we've gathered to start to rule that out in conjunction with whatever broker relationship we have either maintaining or going forward. So, just so you know, we've been working on a lot of those initiatives this summer as well, anticipating the conclusion of this RFP process.
And that will realize both savings to the city, I'm assuming, as well as potentially helping with employee health and safety, et cetera.
Absolutely. It's been a busy summer, so we have a lot that's getting, going to get ready to be rolled out in the next couple of months and at the beginning of the new year.
I'm glad, for then an extra reason that we're able to foresee a successful conclusion of this process.
Yes.
Other questions? Hearing, oh, Ms. Allison.
As a member of the finance committee, I just wanted to thank Councilwoman Neely for her leadership on this and giving us some clear direction, and thank Ms. Nagy for her expertise and sharing her vast knowledge with us to help lead us through this as well. It's been very helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
And we look forward to speaking to you again in a little while, hopefully not too terribly long between now and then.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. I am told that we have a relatively, a staff member who's feeling relatively poorly this evening, and so to help him out, I hope everyone will be patient with me to jump around a little bit on the agenda so that he can maybe get some home and get some rest and have more productive days in the future, both in his personal life and his professional life. So I asked Mr. Yardi to come up to first speak about the demolition of 650 Chestnut Street.
Yes, I appreciate you putting me up, thank you very much, Dr. Williamson, members of council.
Absolutely.
What you have before you is a demolition request from UPMC, Sesquian Health, for the property located at 1650 Chestnut Street. The property was a single-family dwelling and is currently vacant. Once the building has been demolished, UPMC tends to plant grass and not do anything further at this point with that particular property. We do have a representative here if you have any questions of him or myself.
Thank you. Could I have a motion and a second to approve this demolition?
No, moved.
Here, a motion and a second. Comments or questions, members of council? Just, I think, a quick one. This structure is in our two zoning district, right?
That's correct.
And, but not in, is it also then part of the original, I should have looked at one of the maps that you and UPMC have supplied for me in the past. I remember there was the original expansion of the institutional zone, and then I believe an expansion of that, and then there was another zone for essentially future economic development that they were working as part of the partnership with what has now become the Park Avenue planning process.
Correct. This is at the other end of town, this is out down by Divine Properties.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
That's why.
Yeah, I knew that, never mind. I knew that, I was just not thinking. Mr. Nobile.
Joe, just out of curiosity, in this property, I'm trying to envision this when I've been up through that area, it seems to be pretty much offset from hospital property up there presently. It's kind of sets in nowhere, doesn't it?
Well, actually, what you have there, Mr. Nobile, is you have the zone that is the hospital, and this, actually, these, there's like three, Mr. Nar, three or four houses down there that are on that side, and they're, that jog out around and go, very similar to what you have down at corner cuts with like Cumming College, very type, it's just jigs out around. I know the hospital's interested in possibly rezoning that area. I know the hospital's interested in possibly rezoning that area, possibly coming back to use some data with a map amendment, but at this point, yeah, there's three on that side, and the hospital owns this one, they may own a couple.
Other areas.
Yeah, so they own a couple other properties.
Are they on the same side of the street?
As the hospital, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, if you were to go down Chestnut all the way, and make a left, and go down the other street to where the pool used to be, that's the area there, there's probably four houses in that particular area, four or five.
Thank you.
There were problems placed after the census, that may be a lot of two other homes that they all, all the same ones.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? We're so used to the demolitions occurring at the other site, it's a bit of a surprise to have them here, and I think, not that I've heard directly from many constituents about this one, but I would imagine what they would tell me is, we hope that it's relatively limited in a new area. If there are no further comments or questions, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Nobiel.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the demolition is approved. Next item on the agenda is a certificate of appropriateness for 320 Almyra Street.
Yes.
Mr. Girardi.
What you have before you is a certificate of appropriateness for 320 Almyra Street. This was reviewed by the planning commission and recommended for approval. What their request is, it's basically threefold. There's two signs, roof-mounted signs, they wish to construct on the property. There is a fenced-in area that's going to be up behind the one sign to hide the exhaust fans and make-up air systems for the restaurant itself, and also the last would be, you did approve during the one land development, or, excuse me, the one approval process, an outdoor café area, but the outdoor café area was never defined on what it looked like. What you have is a white six-foot-high vinyl fence along the backside. In the front, you'll have some stone piers with metal pans four-foot-high in between for a café-style area. And we do have a representative here from the owner, if you wish to have any questions or comments of him or myself. I did look through the central business design standards for signs, being this, these signs are attached to this style building, they meet all the requirements, maybe except for one, and that's it. There's like 20 different requirements in the central business district for signage. And typically, what I try to do is, I try to review them first before I bring them in for you.
What was the one?
It was the fact that it was a plastic lettering on the outside, but being it's this type of building, that's when it really doesn't meet the requirement. Other than that, it does, because it is a newer-looking building. The older-looking signs that they talk about, we'd like to see them on older buildings, such as you did with the church. It was too modern for that church. These are modern signs, but it's more of a modern-looking building.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve this certificate of appropriateness?
No move.
Second.
Here, a motion and a second. Comments or questions? Ms. Mealy.
Joe, just a review, where's the screening going for the exhaust, the screening for the exhaust that's mentioned? Where is that again? I'm sorry.
If you look at this here, this one here, you'll see on the right-hand side, there's that, the side, there's that little white area behind it, that's the screening for the exhaust fans and so forth, that'll be placed on there, as any kitchens require to have, as you know, exhaust fans to make up air.
Right.
So it's actually going to be mounted up vertical, and then this sign would be probably attached to the front and the back of that, or the front of that particular screening.
Got it. And it'll completely screen the exhaust, so there won't be.
Okay. It'll be the same color and same material that's on the white portion of the building, if I'm correct.
Am I correct, Mr. Day?
Yes.
Got it. All righty, and then the black, what you call black pans, is that going to be a solid black fence, or won't be?
It's a solid black metal fence, if I'm, oh, perforated, I'm sorry. So you would be able to see through it. Yes.
Okay. You'll excuse me, but just so I kind of, perforated means in this context.
It's a non-perforated, or is it what it's set up, most of the black out, is it able to see?
Okay, so.
Yeah, it's a heavy mesh, so it's about 50% restricted for vision.
Okay, got it, got it, got it. Okay, understood. Sorry, I wasn't, it's like perforated, this is not a concept I'm familiar with in fencing. Thank you, Gary, and thank you, Mr. Day.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Nobiel.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that certificate is approved. The last of Mr. Girardi's line items, I believe, is number 11, resolution, request for forgiveness of a lien, and this is a resolution.
Is a resolution.
Let me ask for a motion and a second to approve this resolution.
No move.
Here, a motion and a second, Mr. Girardi.
Yes, you did get your resolution, Janice prepared it, we had a couple minor changes at the end. I did have that reviewed by both attorneys. Both attorneys had certain comments, they wanted me to add to it, so you have the final draft. I did also bring this in front of Finance. What you have before you is a request for the waiving of liens at the property at 523 Fifth Avenue. This property's been on our bladed list for many years, it's been vacant for many years, we've had maintained it. If you look at the picture of the building itself, we've actually had to go and temporarily support that roof, and at this point, we also have removed the trees, that's why the lien's now $1,000 more than what I showed you originally. To give you a little history on this, I did attach a copy of all the violations, we went out on that particular property, I've given you a copy of all the previous owners. There is a letter from the proposed owner requesting to purchase this property. What you'll find on this is that this roof won't make it through another winter, so I'm going to have to go through with my clean-to-seal and tear that roof down, which would be probably anywhere between $25,000 to $3,000. Next step for this particular building, I hate to say, will be in a couple of years, I'll probably be coming back and just telling you, "We're tearing it down," and then we're going to tear it down and lien the property, and we'll end up having probably $40,000 worth liens on this particular parcel of ground, which we'll never recoup, and it'll end up going to a share sale, or a judicial sale, where we lose all of the money. So my opinion is, I think it's a good idea to do it on this particular property, I think City Council has that ability to place conditions on this particular agreement, that maybe if it's not fulfilled within a certain period of time, the liens are placed back on the property, or give a timeframe to have the property so it's in compliance. I do know that I have talked to the owner, she is here, that her intent before winter come is to repair, fix, make the roof structurally sound, and put on a new roof on the building. So if you have any questions of myself or her, we're both here, and I also gave you a copy of all the liens that I have placed over the last 11 years on all the properties in the city of Williamsport, so you have that list also.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mealy from Finance.
Yep, Finance did review this and forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. However, in the course of our discussions with Mr. Girardi, we did agree with Mr. Girardi that it might be appropriate to set some conditions, given that this property is, I guess, in sort of a liminal state right now, that is to say that a lot of deterioration could happen quite quickly if it's not addressed, so I think it would be wise for council, in my opinion, to waive the lien, but set some parameters, so that we're certain that the property doesn't continue to deteriorate over the course of the winter, and wind up causing further issues for the new owner. That said, the only other, obviously, we discussed what Mr. Girardi just reviewed, that is to say that the city could continue mounting liens on the property, to the point where it's not even marketable, frankly, as an empty lot, which is likely to be the final, the final point of it, whereas now, it's a usable structure, and if Ms. Logue chooses to rehabilitate it, it will go back on the city's tax rolls and begin to generate at least a modicum of revenue for us. The, and then, we discussed with Joe as well, I guess, just the state of property liens in the city, and the extent to which any of those liens are ever recovered, which Mr. Girardi is going to give us a more comprehensive evaluation of how much money we actually do recover in liens versus how much goes missing, but he didn't think that we got a lot of it back. That said, I think it's lovely that someone wants to take this property on, especially in the condition that it is, and my only other suggestion is that when we, when and if we do set conditions, obviously, Ms. Logue is here to agree to the conditions, and we do just want to establish, I understand, I believe that she is buying this property in partnership with her son, so just as long as we have one of the owners present to agree to the conditions, one of the potential owners present to agree to the conditions, I think we're all set.
Thank you. Let me follow up on that, so we can go ahead and get the conditions in place, if it makes sense. One condition, it seemed to me, would be simply make it conditional on the sale of the property to the proposed owner.
That's correct.
And I assume that Mr. White would be, give us some language on making sure that that condition made, was defensible, basically. The second condition, it sounds like, is some kind of time, a reasonable time limit, of course. What would be the trigger that would be, that occupancy permit, is that the trigger for having achieved?
Correct.
Within the time limit? So, we can talk about the time limit with the proposed buyer, Ms. Logue, if we want, but, you know, it sounds like maybe something like a year would be a number that you would be comfortable with?
Yes, I would, yes. I think the biggest concern, and I think she'll probably agree with me, is the actual roof structure and the front porch. Once those two are stabilized and in good place, then, then she's made an initial investment in the property, it'll be a large investment, because the roof's not going to be cheap, and the front porch is not going to be cheap. So at that point, I can't imagine her doing those things and not wanting to complete the project.
Sure.
We usually give out two years for a permit, okay, that's our normal timeframe, when we issue a permit for the work to be done. I think, though, she's going to want to try to do something to at least occupy a portion of this, to start recouping some of her, you know, so maybe that timeframe of the year is for her to have at least a tenant and a half of it, and then two years to complete the project.
And to me, that makes sense, so as long as it would make sense to her, I'm not trying to put a burden on anyone in this, I just, if it's, if something goes wrong, and it doesn't accomplish our all mutual goal of having it successfully back in productive use.
Right.
Then we ought to go back to having liens against an unproductive property.
Right.
And so, maybe that is a double trigger, that there be an occupancy permit issued within one year for some or all of the structure, and that the building permit be closed out within two years?
That'd be fine, yes.
And so, I'll make a motion to make, add two conditions, condition one being that there is a successful sale of the property to...
I would say, if you're going to condition one, that the waiver of liens is conditional upon the property being sold to the current prospective purchaser, Ms. Logan or business partner.
Thank you, that's condition one, and the motion, that condition two would be that the lien will be put back into place, there's probably a legal term for that, reestablished?
A good word.
That's a better word. Reestablished if, within one year, no occupancy permit is...
Issued.
Issued, there we go. For any part of the property, or if in two years, the, any building permits are not successfully closed out.
Right.
If that's language that makes sense to everyone involved. Now, I make that motion, I'll ask for a second, but before we go any further, then we should ask Ms. Logue if those are acceptable to her. So is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
So with a motion and a second, Ms. Logue, could you come to the podium, and, again, I don't think it's our intention to put any special burden on you, but just, if something bad were to happen, we'd get back to the status quo we have right now.
We, we want to get that roof closed up by winter, we're hoping.
Sure. Are those conditions?
The roof and the porch.
Yeah.
And then the interior, like, one side next heating season, have somebody inside one, one half, smaller half, it's a big building.
Yeah, sure.
And then the other side, the following heating season, have somebody in there.
So would, would those conditions be acceptable to you, then?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Are there comments or questions on the proposed conditions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, on the proposed conditions?
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Nobiel.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those conditions are duly added. Mr. Nobiel.
Joe, just one quick question. With the concept of one side being occupied within a year, close to that timeframe, will the other side have to be up to code, safety-wise, before that place can be occupied?
It would have to be up to code, safety-wise, to a certain point.
Okay, I mean, I understand remodeling would be a different story, but, I mean, fire codes and things of that nature.
We, when we go through, we issue temporary certificates a lot in the city of Williamsport, where you have half a building occupied, the other one they want to work on, yeah, we'll all make sure that you don't have live wires running around, everything's taped off, smoke alarm protection, fire extinguisher protection, those kind of things, yes, we have done this in the past with other buildings.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions on the full resolution? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Nobiel.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the resolution has passed, and so thank you for investing in the city, as you always have.
Thank you very much, and if I could just add one last thing, at the Finance Committee, Ms. Mealy did bring up the fact that we do have several outstanding liens, if you've seen what we have listed there, and there are several that are on a property that amount to a lot of money. Mr. Lubin is our attorney who files those liens, I know the mayor's been, I'm wondering about this himself, we've been trying to push to close out some of these liens, I know Ms. Mealy said something about an executive session, maybe in two weeks I get all the information around, we can sit down with Mr. Lubin at an executive session, because I believe there is a way you can go through and collect liens off a property, even if the property is, there's not an owner. I'm not an attorney, I don't go through that, but it'd be nice, I think, if you look through those numbers, to get some of that money back. I mean, that's, I'm a taxpayer, just like everybody else, and that's our money being used for these, it'd be nice to get that back into the budget.
Thank you very much, that's a great idea, and look forward to it.
My understanding was that it was possibly through kind of a forced sale on properties that weren't in use any longer, or weren't, to which we couldn't trace ownership, and clearly, that benefits the community just at large, even if the city doesn't succeed in recouping the entirety of the liens, to put a completely unproductive property back into some level of use within the community, you know, restores a whole in a neighborhood, and potentially, you know, bolsters the tax base once again, so I think that's a win all around, and we need to work on that as much as we can.
And thank you again for letting me go, appreciate it.
Thank you, we hope you feel better.
I hope so, too.
I believe, then, what makes most sense is to move to Mr. Nar's agenda items. And, Mr. Nar, land development first, is that probably what makes sense, given your guess?
Public hearing first.
Oh, I'm sorry, public hearing, on the zoning map amendment?
I don't think either one of them will take very long.
Okay, then we'll go with the public hearing.
Good evening, Dr. Williamson, a member of City Council. What I present to you is, the city's requesting a zoning map amendment for the Lycoming College Gateway Project, which the land development had been approved in previous months. In accordance to the Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code, you're required to have a public hearing to give the public an opportunity to address or have any questions or concerns for the zoning map amendment, and that's why we're here.
Let me ask Mr. White something real quick. It probably makes most sense for me to hand over the gavel for the public hearing and the other associated item, so I...
Well, actually, I think we missed limited courtesy of the floor.
Oh, you're right, thank you. Can I do it after this, or, well, let me, let me just go quickly, very quickly, go up to that. Next item on the agenda is limited courtesy of the floor, we've had no request for that this evening, so I'll go back to Mr. Nar. Thank you. I did miss that. And so, thank you for catching that, Mrs. Frank and Mr. White, but for the public hearing, I'm going to hand over the gavel to Mr. Allison.
That sounds appropriate.
Thank you. Please call it open.
Public hearing's now open.
Again, what the public, what the public hearing is designed to do is, the city's Again, what the public, what the public hearing is designed to do is the city's requesting a zoning amend, zoning amendment, zoning map amendment to the ordinance. You do have a copy of the proposal. In accordance to the Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code, it's required to have a public hearing to give the public an opportunity to address any questions or concerns.
In that case, is there anyone present tonight that would like to speak in favor of the project? And seeing none, is there anyone present tonight that would like to speak against the project, or the zoning amendment? And we have none of those either, so, I'm going to close the public meeting. No.
That's not them.
We're going to get to that. Uh, Mr. Nar?
The, the next item, actually, would be the actual map amendment itself, and what we present to you is you do have a copy of the zoning map amendment, and what this is designed to do is basically to do a little bit of zoning cleanup, as well as, this is part of Lycoming College Gateway, there's a small parcel at the corner of Franklin and East Fourth Street, which basically, during the land swap and everything, would transfer over to Lycoming College, and in that part, it is part of the central business district, so we're going to request that we change it from the CBD to the institutional. Again, what is to do is kind of a zoning cleanup, as well as, it's to further enhance the gateway, Lycoming College's gateway project. In a, in addition to that, Lycoming Colli, I mean, Lycoming Planning Commission did review that, you do have comments, it does meet our future map, our future comprehensive plan, and it was also reviewed by our planning commission, and both of them gave positive recommendation for the zoning map amendment change.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Nar. I guess we have a motion and a second on the zoning amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion from council. Questions?
I can just point out, for the sake of the public, that this is perhaps not routine, but actually is, yeah, is, is simply tidying up some, some things involved with the Lycoming College Gateway Project, as Mr. Nar said, and, and will, I think, make the city's zoning map significantly cleaner than it has been for the last however many decades. So, so, yeah, there's nothing, nothing much to see here.
Yeah, we have discussed this numerous times, this moving parcels and the way the, the way the college's project is developing and the city's part of it, it, it necessitated putting things in different places so we had continuity in the zoning there.
And as part of, again, as part of Lycoming College Gateway Project itself, we basically have cleaned up two-thirds of it. The first was the land development, lot consolidation would be the first, the second would be the zoning map change, the final phase of it would be to actually do the street vacation, and we won't do that till it gets closer to the end of the project and the switchover of the streets, and that will come back before council at a later date, to finalize the Lycoming College Gateway Project.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nar. Any other comments or questions from council? Uh, if not, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Thank you, Mrs. Frank, and the, the motion passes five zero one.
All right, I'll take that back, then. Then we'll move on down to number 12, the land development plan for 611 Washington Boulevard. Mr. Nar?
Good evening, again. The following request is a proposed land development plan for PA Investment Properties LP. It is located at 611 Washington Boulevard. It is, it is currently located within the CC zoning district. The current land use is an existing restaurant store facility. The proposed land development consists of demolition of the existing building and creating a new restaurant store of 2,811 square feet. The plan also proposes to move existing pavement, landscape, lighting, and signage to be replaced with a new layout which you have been provided. The plan also proposes three access points. The first is a 24-foot two-way, which intersects with Washington Boulevard. The second is a 12-foot one-way, which intersects Washington Boulevard as well. The third is a 20-foot two-way, which intersects Brandon Place, which would actually be behind a facility. The third access does not meet Section 1379.03, Bowleg B., which requires 24. They're proposing a 24, a 20-foot width. Pennsylvania Investment Properties is requesting a waiver, and in accordance to Section 1379.03, Bowleg D., which permits the planning commission to grant such a waiver, they did recommend, they did request a waiver from the planning commission, the planning commission did grant that waiver. Again, because of the low volume of the traffic, it's an existing facility that is there and has been there for years, it's just under the new development, they're required to basically have 24, but they did, they were granted the, by the planning commission, the waiver. In addition to that, though, obviously, the planning commission did review it and gave positive recommendation with the waiver approved. The Lycoming County Planning Commission reviewed the plans August 1st. You do have their comments. I can tell you, all the cleanup of that was, was, was cleaned up. I do have current new drawings, and again, the waiver was granted, the new drawings do state that on the actual application itself, and I can answer any questions at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nar. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the land development plan?
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Noviello?
Gary, what's, what's the significance of the four feet? Is it because it's already in that-
It's two-way traffic. It's, it's just a design phase so that you can kind of get two vehicles in there comfortably, and again, nowadays, with some of the bigger vehicles that we do have out there, that's what the design's for, is for that two-way traffic, one each way.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, as well, do you know what it currently is right now? It seems to me, I remember squeezing through there-
It is currently about 18.
Okay, so this actually will widen it to a degree. Okay, thank you. Mealy?
Um, and then for me, just a question about pedestrian access. It looks as though, my, my reading, but sometimes my reading of these plans is not excellent, is that, basically, vehicles will be able to drive in there to the, to the eastern side of the building, come up, come through the drive-through. The drive-through will circle back around in front of the structure, but there is a pedestrian access.
Yeah, correct. Basically, what the facility's going to do is the current facility that you have there has the driveway going around the same way, except on the western side, there's parking. They're removing that, shifting the building over a little bit and back, which will allow so that there's not a big issue as far as stacking, as far as to get in through the drive-through.
Understood. Got it, and the, just, the, the pass-through of, in front of the building, given that there is an egress onto Washington Boulevard on the western side, the pass-through there is for, just to allow people to circle around if necessary?
Well, it's, it's also what it's designed to do so their delivery vehicles can get in that section.
Okay, understood. And we are, obvi, obviously, we feel comfortable with the pedestrian access there, but, okay, good, sounds good.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Mr. Allison?
I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the, the property owner and the franchise owner for working with us. We had some technical difficulties and bureaucratic problems along the way these things happened, and Mr. Nar did a good job as well, guiding us through it, and we're, we're thrilled to have Burger King in Williamsport, and thrilled that, happy for the remodel, and wish for lots of success in the future.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me, just, Mr. Allison reiterated something I said earlier, so I'll reiterate it. I think that, you know, that things get crazy a little bit around here around Little League time, and sometimes the processes we prefer to have in place don't always kind of go smoothly because we all get distracted on being, our little town being a, a showplace to the world, and, and so, thank you for our patience, your patience with that process, and, and Mr. Nar and I had some good conversations on how to get it back on track, and he had a good plan, and I just had to have faith in his plan to, to make that happen. So, we are here and, and are very glad. I think this is part of a process where it's really happening with the fast food industry, maybe nationally, we've seen, certainly seen it in this area, kind of going through a refresh cycle, and in doing so, rethinking about how to best meet the needs of their customers. As I understand it, as, as just an outside observer, we've seen that, not necessarily in the city, but in the, in the surrounding area, at a few places nearby, it's nice to see that happening here in the city, and, and I, I wasn't aware, and I, I think that that's an interesting change. Not only will it be good for the customers, but it may also then be good for the traffic that's going by to help with stacking issues, as the industry has learned about those in cooperation with municipalities over the years. So, I'm glad to see that and look forward to getting back to the new Burger King. By the way, when will, can we expect the bad news of, of a temporary closure and then the very good news of having the refreshed building ready to go?
When?
More or less, if things work the way it's-
It'll be December, or-
Reopened in the middle of December, so we can all have a Christmas whopper. Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the land development plan is approved. Thank you again. Help me out. This gets back to the ordinance. Which brings us to the ordinance and final reading, amending Article 709. Mrs. Frank, please.
An ordinance amending Article 709, disturbing the peace.
Uh, is there a motion and a second for this ordinance, the final reading?
Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Comments or, actually, should, say hello to Captain Miller, how are you this evening?
Good evening, President of Council, members of council, mayor administration. Before you is for a final reading to amend the nor, noise ordinance, to includes now fireworks activity, which is a response to the state law and the issues that we dealt with this past summer.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions? Mr. Noviello?
Just quickly, I want to thank Captain Miller for the language he put into this. It's, uh, it's, it may well become a touchy subject as this whole program of new firework displays and patty comes to the fore, but I think we've got a pretty good handle on it, at least presently, and it's one of those things I think we will learn as we go along and make some determinations, maybe, there may well be some amendments here as we go down the line here, and I know that Captain Miller's open to that, that concern, so, again, thank him for the work put into this.
Other comments or questions? Just for the public's knowledge, I, I did receive one question that I was actually able to answer about all of this, and the question was, would the restrictions here apply to the institutionally-sponsored fireworks that we see at Bowman Field, or, I believe, Penn College, and, and maybe there are others, that we, of course, city-sponsored ones that we see over the course of the year, and if I read the ordinance correctly, it refers back to the state law that specifically applies the new, the changes to consumer fireworks, and so, would not specifically change anything that is currently in place connected to professionally overseeing fireworks. Is that correct?
Correct, that's my understanding.
Okay, thank you. So, I just wanted to bring that out, if others in the public had that question. Hearing no further comments or questions, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the ordinance passes in final reading. Thank you again. Next item on the agenda is resolution for stormwater agreement. Mrs. Frank?
Resolution transfer of operations and transition agreement between the City of Williamsport and the Williamsport Sanitary Authority for stormwater control.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
With a motion and a second. Let me make the presentation, then. As all members of council know, and as many members of the public know, City Council has been working with the water and sanitary authorities over a period of, in excess of two years now, to move from a, essentially, a reactive approach to the city's stormwater system to one that is more proactive and one that better manages our stormwater situation in the SISI by transferring operations of our stormwater system from the city government to the water and sewer authorities. We got very close about 10 months ago, I think, to completion with a few minor details, and then there were a variety of transitions that occur within the, the water and sanitary authorities that led to a little bit of a slowdown in the process. I believe it was in either April or May, then the current, the agreement in its current form was sent to the city, to City Council, and we were a little bit slow maybe handling it through legal review, and then trying to understand exactly what the changes were and what the intentions moving forward of, of the sanitary authority and the water and sanitary authorities would be. But, the document we have before us tonight is exactly the same language as the document sent to us by the authorities with no changes when they sent it to us, whenever it was in April and May. So, what I am asking for is a discussion and hopefully approval of the agreement that they have also, as I understand it, agreed to, which then leads us, essentially, to the completion of that long process to figure out what is in the best interest of the citizens of Williamsport going forward in terms of handling stormwater. The next steps, and Mr. White can help me if I miss anything here, are essentially closing, as if you were closing on the assets of the, the stormwater system, almost like the closing of, of when you purchase a home. And, so, minor details to be worked out from this point forward, and of course, one of the things that I, and others, but I, as, as President of Council, have reached out to the leadership and the, the authority to then, to set up a meeting between council and the authority, of course, administration as well, to work out those final details and make sure that we have a seamless transition, because it's a complicated process to, to transfer the assets and then actually transfer the operations. And so, this is kind of a major, a, a major step in the process, but not the final step to then actually being, implementing everything laid out in this agreement. This was, I think, reviewed by all of us many times, but in this very process, reviewed by the Public Works Committee, and so, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Noviello for that review.
This, as Dr. Williamson mentioned, is a continuing saga, if you will. We've been working at this for sometime past two years at this point in time. In the estimation of the Public Works, this seemed to be a very logical kind of move. That may well have been the reasoning why it took so long, because logic is such a hard sell in some cases, but this is a situation where we think we are at least, to the best of our thinking, pass this responsibility on to those who are best suited to respond to the concerns we have regarding stormwater currently, and certainly, we know we're still facing some of the issues that are yet to be addressed, which, again, will bring us back to more of that complexity, but we felt that with what we had done to this point and all the work from everyone that had been involved, that we would pass this on to a full-bodied council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Comments or questions from members of council? Hearing none. I just reiterate that this is the, the document, and I think we did some typing to make sure that we had it in a form that was most useful for Mrs. Frank, but otherwise, the, the language is exactly what was sent to us by the authority, so, I'm glad to get this passed and, and be ready for the next step. So, if there are no further comments, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Am I, except for filing?
Yeah.
Okay. I jumped around more even so than usual, so, next item on the agenda is except for filing. We have the public safety meaning minutes of July 3rd, 2018. Do I have a motion and a second to approve those?
So moved. Second.
Hearing motion and a second. Comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, those are accepted. Next item on the agenda is announcements. We will be having, as you heard, an executive session this evening, immediately following the regularly, regular council meeting for the purposes of both personnel and negotiations, I believe. The next regularly scheduled City Council meeting will be held on Thursday, September 20th at 7:30 here in council chambers. Other upcoming meetings include Monday, September 17th at noon, the planning commission; on Tuesday, September 18th at 10:00 a.m., the Blighted Property Committee; at 3:30 p.m., the ERC.
We're canceling.
Canceling the ERC. So then, you can look forward to the 6:30 p.m. meeting of HARB on Thursday, September 20th at 10:30 a.m. is the zoning hearing board, and at 4:00 p.m. is the Board of Health. On Tuesday, September 25th, at 1:00 p.m. is Finance Committee; 2:30 p.m. is Public Works; and at 3:30 p.m. is Public Safety, as well as that evening at 7:00 p.m. is the Citizens' Core Council. That brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. Are there comments from members of council?
Just one.
Mr. Slaughter?
Mr. Mayor, is there an update at all on any unpaid bills that we might have? The list?
Mr. Nichols?
Sorry? Yeah, the one at issue was our consultant, Wood. It's been taken care of. We're still working on a matrix for you. So, we all know what's being funded from where. You know, it's complicated, but we wanted to get that done, even though we don't have the precise funding source for what we paid. But they're all caught up. As far as anything else, I reviewed anything that potentially was late. And I had an extra staff person, RVT, come down to help this week, and a new person's starting Monday. So, I think we're in pretty good shape. But if there's anything out there, someone can contact me and I will take care of it right away.
All of our obligations are up to date.
It's been addressed.
But the main one, the main one that was at issue, which again, was complicated because, you know, there's a lot of things that went with that, but we took care of it immediately. And as far as anything else, like I said, I brought an extra person this week just to try to make sure everything was caught up. So, and we're looking forward to the new person on Monday.
That's fantastic. We don't have any outstanding bills currently.
Yeah. Like I said, if I miss something, please let me know. But like I said...
Thank you. Ms. Mealy?
At Tuesday's finance meeting, among other things, we discussed the start of a new person in the finance department this coming Monday, and also a suggestion by our treasurer to sort of examine interest-bearing, you know, the interest return on some of the city's existing accounts. And we decided to, basically, in a few weeks, when the new hire has had time to kind of settle in a little bit, to return to a couple of concepts relating to the finance department and both flow and process, and also if there's a way to look at earning some higher interest on some of the money that the city is currently holding in accounts. And so, we will, we'll be following up on all of that and sort of doing a state of finance again here in about a month's time. So, and Mr. Slaughter, if you, frankly, probably, it would be lovely if you wanted to attend.
Yeah, I would like, 1 o'clock's a little...
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. All right. Then, if you want to follow up with me, we can have coffee afterward and I can let you know what happened. I apologize. Yeah, your timeframes and mine don't usually gel very well.
Thank you.
Process in place when interest rates were much better in the past. And so, using various financial vehicles, such as Pliggett, local banks, the treasurer worked well, the former treasurer worked well with the administration in searching for, you know, favorable rates for short-term investments that are allowed by government funds and making sure that government funds that can't be in interest-bearing accounts are separated and things like that. So, you know, it's an excellent idea to get that going again and, you know, and see what we can capture in terms of additional interest income.
The treasurer's suggestion, and, you know, one never knows if it will pan out in fact or not, was that we might be able to realize enough new income from higher interest rates to come close to funding a new full-time hire in the finance department, which of course, as we all know, you know, the money could go any number of directions. But at least that, it helps to swallow the pill of needing more staffing in the finance department if we can, if that new hire can help to generate some revenue that offsets the cost of them.
Other comments from members of council? Mr. Allison?
Just quickly, I think we all want to thank Senator Yaw shepherding through the RACB grant and with the good news that we're getting a million dollars for the levy. And that's the plan, that was the first step as far as the funding to replace the relief well. So, hopefully, that begins to build momentum for the whole project. You can't have momentum until you get that first step, and now we have it. We're grateful for that.
Thank you. That's a very good point. Mr. Novello?
Quickly, thank Penn Strategies also for their hand in this and helping to sort of guide us through some of this. It was pretty murky. And we started getting into the state level of politics, which is even worse yet. So, we're happy to have someone in our stead in that position.
And he's going to be working, they're going to be working on, already working on projects related to that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Nichols?
Also want to, I know, working on a press release, I think that also Senator Yaw was successful in another RACB grant for Bowman Field, an amount of $600,000, which we'll finish, will provide the necessary funds to finish our capital improvement program we've had in place for some time. And I know that will secure some additional years with the crosscutters. And so, that information will be forthcoming, but he worked hard, you know, with the governor to make that happen. So, that was tremendously exciting for those who are all involved with that project. And so, I just wanted to make, again, thank Senator Yaw for his efforts.
Absolutely. I think the partnership that has emerged between the senator and the city, and we should also include the county here, has been a really positive one. He's been a great advocate for the City of Williamsport in recent years. Let me, I don't think there are other comments from members of council. Let me just make a correction on something I read a few minutes ago. The next regularly scheduled council meeting is September 27th, not September 20th. I should have slowed down in my reading. If there are no other comments from members of council, Mr. Mayor, you or your administration?
Yes, I just want to say, you know, when we think about the land party, we really should say that. So, in regards to the compliments of Penn Strategies, Senator Yaw.
I'd like to thank everybody.
Thank you. If there are no other comments from the administration, or there are comments from the general public? If you're ready, please, for anyone, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. These are our standard rules on a matter of city business.
Thank you. Joe, if you're ready, 37 Elder Street, Williamsport, PA. You were throwing out some compliments. I wanted to throw out whoever got the city down there to cut the grass at the Williamsport Cemetery is looking good. It had been looking really shabby. We got a lot of history in that cemetery. Co-founder Dickinson's College, Michael Ross, there's Governor Packard in there. I lived on Anthony Street, and Anthony Street dead ends into that cemetery. So, I always took notice to it when I went by. But I don't know, there was nothing in the paper, news media. Is the city going to take that over now? I know that city equipment was used and city personnel was down there. I know in next weekend, I believe it is, or this weekend, High Still Structures is going to be down there again to cut, and they bring like 30 people with them down there. They cut it in the spring, and Leroux Tressler, who spearheaded a lot of that cleanup down there, had said that they cut it in like three hours. And they did a really nice job, and it was all volunteers, the gas, the equipment and everything. But I just think it would be something the city should look at, definitely. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
First of all, I'd like to thank Streets and Parks because part of our policy is to come back once a year. We do not own it. Taxpayers are actually, I have received some criticism in regards to the city even cutting it, believe it or not. But I do believe it's our responsibility to get in there at least once a year. So, we are cutting it. We just cut it recently. I'd like to also applaud Peachy O'Connor publicly, because she spearheaded a group of individuals on Facebook to go out there and do some additional work as well. We have spoken to the board of the Williamsport Cemetery multiple times in regards to coming up with a plan of action, so we will continue to discuss with them. But if there's additional volunteers out there, please have them contact our office, and we can work together with Streets and Parks.
I know for a fact, and you've probably seen, and what the High Still Structures is bringing more people down, I believe it's this weekend, I'm 100% sure on that. And like I said, the last time they brought 30 people down, weed whackers and grass-cutting equipment. But, you know, the new Burger King, they're going to have it over there in December, nice shiny Burger King, and we got three feet of grass growing across the street from it. And Washington Boulevard has high traffic. There's a lot of people up and down through there. But thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Other comments or questions, or I'm sorry, comments, please approach the podium.
I live 636 Market Street. I'm here to address the fact that my son, I'm quite sure y'all heard of the video, seen the paper, when my son was slammed to the pavement by an officer. Only thing I asked was for someone to explain to me. They keep saying it was because of his turn, which his testicles were squeezed. Any man's going to jump. But at any given time, he could be, you know, what happened to restraining like this? Instead of thrown to the ground, his hands go straight to the neck when his hands are straight up. And I'm not getting no answers. No one's reached out to me to explain anything to me, or anything they did was come days later and arrest my son. Yes, you know, they keep charging my son with these charges, and he keep, they get dismissed every time. My child is not one of the reasons of the 300 overdoses in Williamsport. My son don't have, my son don't sell drugs. If you look up his background, you will see that my son played basketball. That's what my son do. My son just was told he could go to Texas University. Now, he's sitting in Lycoming County Prison, telling my site in a riot and disorderly conduct resisting arrest. He was never put under arrest to resist from. It was no riot. A riot consists of violence. You know, people coming out and joining in, and wasn't, none of that took place. So, it's like, I'm not getting any answers. Nobody's answering me. And can you imagine, as a mother, watching on Facebook time and time and time again, your child being thrown to the ground? He'd been harassed, the officer following behind him, saying, "Hey, bro. Come here, bro. You packing, bro? Search him, he don't have anything going." They bust his head up against the door. They supposed to be here to serve and protect our community. I grew up here. My son is born and raised here. I remember white men enforcement being on the force, never took place. They said, "Take a village to raise a child." What happened to our village? The one people that we supposed to feel safe by is our officers. Now, when we see our officers, I remember my mother telling me when I come from school, "Or if anything happened to you, or if you see any stranger, you call 911." Now, we got to tell our kids, "You pull out your cell phone and record?" No. When are we going to come together? They say, you know, it's all about our community. When? Not once did I get a phone call about my son or anything. And I feel powerless because I'm not able to help my child. He's sitting in Lycoming County Prison. For what? And I still don't have no answers.
Thank you, ma'am. Let me just say that on every issue that comes before City Council during public comment, the practice has been long before I was on council to essentially thank you for your comments and then not make it an exchange between council and whoever's speaking. So, no disrespect if we don't do that. But also then, you know, talk to you offline and encourage good communication. That's what you're asking for, I think. So, thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Are there other comments from the general public? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.